All right, everybody, I'm gonna call this special meeting of the Ojai City Council and Planning Commission, which is really a continuation of our last meeting to order. And if I could have a roll call, please, for City Council.
Councilmember Laura, Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Clapp.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wirick.
Here.
Mayor Blatts.
Here. And if I could have a roll call for Planning Commission, please.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Corbin.
Here.
Commissioner Quilisi is absent. Commissioner Merk.
Here.
Commissioner Nolan.
Vice Chair Jagiello.
Here.
Chair Zabilla.
Here.
Yeah, let the record reflect that Councilman Laura just arrived. All right, well, this is a continuation of the last meeting where we couldn't get through everything, so hopefully we can get through everything that we want to discuss tonight. So, we have a few other topics that we need to get to. So, I'm gonna see how the chair wants to proceed. What would you like to do?
Well, I'm happy to just spend two minutes on each topic and as a kickoff. I'll just, Commissioner Quilisi sends his apologies, he's stuck in traffic somewhere and doesn't think that he will make it in time. Can you imagine traffic in Southern California? So, neighborhood, so I'll just go down these real quickly. Neighborhood planning, actually, that, I think, is the oldest thing on our list, is neighborhood planning. And I would just say the money's been spent. I think that Planning Commission certainly discussed having that come to us in a workshop format, so the public would be invited as well. And then, the last I heard, council wanted to see it first. So, I don't know if it's just a matter of getting it on the agenda or what, but I would say that would be the next priority.
Is there a schedule for them to be making a presentation to council?
I've been waiting to hear from y'all, so I'm willing-
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
So, I never got the go-ahead to go ahead and schedule it. If someone gives me the go-ahead to schedule it, I'd be happy to do that. If you pick a time and date you want it to come before the council, be happy to do that.
Any thoughts? I'd say as soon as they can.
Yeah, I thought we'd communicated that we were looking for a presentation as soon as possible.
I think in the last discussion that we had, the staff level, I think we were working to get something either in late October or November to council, that's where we had it, so.
Okay.
All right, well, let's do that.
Can I ask a brief question? So, I'd just like to know that, so the way that they wanted to, we had originally put in our contract for three workshops at the Boyd Center, the neighborhood workshops. And they felt that they kind of exhausted everything with that kind of forum. So, what they wanted to do was have the third and last workshop with the Planning Commission, and have people come, and then have a working meeting with the Planning Commission. So, is that the same thing that you want, but only at the council level?
I'll just express myself.
Go ahead.
Like, all I can do.
Okay.
It's been so long.
Okay.
So long ago.
Right.
That these people were engaged, that I want to see a presentation from them and see where they're at.
Okay, that's fine. Is that generally what everybody wants, just like a-
That's my feeling.
Okay.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Okay, cultural resources.
Well, let me just ask one other thing, and I see that Commissioner Nolan's not here tonight. But I'm curious as to where the Complete Streets situation is. Do you know?
You mean the Nygaard master plan?
Yeah.
The other aspect of the neighborhood planning, that sort of ancillary or subsidiary work? I think that's what-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the Complete Streets that Commissioner Nolan is setting up, somehow, I think, that needs to get to us for, I think it's at a point where they need additional direction.
Yes, I have repeated, you know, since the Complete Streets is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, I've brought that up numerous times to the Planning Commission, that the subcommittee needs to come before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission forwarded up to you folks for redirect, for clarification, or just a checkpoint. Yes, we've brought that up numerous times.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, go ahead.
I would agree with you. I think because it was a subcommittee, it's only appropriate that it goes to the full Planning Commission first before it comes before council.
Correct, that's correct, that's how I see it. So, I just want verification. Okay, see head shaking, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Good point. Okay, thank you. Cultural resources, so the ad-hoc committee has been meeting for the last two, three months, and it's been open, they've been holding the meetings in these chambers, and I have attended, I think, all of them. And it is, how do I say this? I think there's a lot of heat, but maybe not too much light, or maybe the other way around. I think that the Planning Commission is still hoping to get a clear policy. And it looks like, you know, when I sit in the meetings, I just, it just feels like it's still kind of contentious and a bit of a struggle. And I don't know how to make that better. I know that, for us, we always have a condition in our, in our conditions that provide for discovery of human remains, but the tribe is there consistently if the condition for accidental discovery is not there, and they ask for it. And, you know, the commission has consistently given that okay to, for the policy for what happens if, you know, there's an accidental discovery of cultural resources, that work will stop, et cetera. So, the commission is still looking for additional direction. And I know everybody's trying to make stuff work, and I, I mean, I know you guys have been at it forever, and I'm sure everybody wants to bring it to a happy conclusion with, you know, compromise for all. But that's, that's all I'll say, is we're still waiting for a full policy. The primate circle rezone, I mean, this is-
Did you have a comment?
I had a comment.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask Chair Zabilla, if you're concerned with the cultural resources, is the lack of direction you have, or are you waiting for direction from the ad-hoc committee? Like, what, because I'm hearing, I feel like you're mixing both things together, because they should be separated.
So, I don't think, I don't think that we need, I think we just need a policy that, is a policy that, that we're not in a position of having to make a determination on every project as to what the appropriate thing to do is, because we don't really know what the-
So, my understanding, and I would, and I would hope staff would jump in to help me out, is, right now, the ad-hoc committee is working on recommendations on how it is interpreting the conservation element. And before that gets implemented, we first have to take it to council for them to say yes, no, or go back and rework this. Whatever comes out of that will obviously be the new policy. But whatever project comes in front of the Planning Commission, right now, my understanding is, there has been some things implemented or updated that have to do with cultural resources. That was kind of in the direction of the council, but isn't, isn't, it's up to the Planning Commission to determine whether those findings justify there being cultural resource, either conditions mitigation put on there, because that's right now, that's your, the Planning Commission's authority to add conditions to certain projects. So, that's separate than what the policy that we're talking about. So, I think we're confusing two different things. Does that make sense, Kathleen?
Yeah, I think that, that we're, when I take projects before the Planning Commission, we're just trying to be somewhat standardized and treat people equally, and, you know, over the last year, it's kind of evolved. And so, I think it comes across as being somewhat, you know, on a case-by-case basis, because a year ago, we were asking for monitoring on almost everything, and now, we've sort of moved away from monitoring onto, in the, using the standard disclaimer, that in the event of, you know, a discovery, an unknown artifact discovered, things will cease and desist. And I think we're using that, we really haven't gotten feedback from anybody, whether, from the council, whether that's the appropriate. So, we've moved away from monitoring, because, you know, the tribe actually isn't asking for that. So, it's just becoming kind of on a case-by-case basis. So, we just, we, I think we realize that it's taking a while to get the cultural resources ad hoc and council determinations on things, but I think there was just maybe an interest in having feedback if that's, if we're going the right direction in the interim.
So, might, I'm sorry, Betsy.
Thank you. I think what we've got is a classic problem of stuck in committee. It's similar with the Complete Streets program committee as well. They've been stuck in committee, and what's happened, I think, with council is council's kind of willy-nilly, or, you know, cherry-picking certain things to implement without a real policy. If I'm understanding you, you're saying you need a policy to follow, and you don't have one, so you would like the committee to come forward with a policy, have it go to council, maybe you have feedback, then it goes to council, and then we get this policy developed so that you know what to do when somebody comes to you. It sounds to me, right now, like you have no idea, because there's no written policy for what to do, and whenever you have case-by-case basis, you are asking for trouble, because people start feeling like, you know, maybe this time I've been, you know, had stronger enforcement than this guy over here got, and that's the risk you take when you don't have a written policy. So, my suggestion would be that we have a time certain that this comes to Planning Commission for feedback, and then on to the council for feedback, and a determination of what our policy's gonna be, so that that doesn't happen. It's been there long enough, it needs to be taken care of. So, I would think that it'd be really important for council to put it on the agenda to establish a date certain. I don't know if we can do that here in this meeting.
I agree. Let me ask Mr. Summers, is this something, because it's agendized tonight, that the council can act on?
Yeah, the council couldn't take an action to adopt a policy tonight, but the council could certainly direct tonight that the ad-hoc committee bring back their report out with their recommendations, if any, or a slew of what they're going to report out by a hard deadline. That's within your agenda item tonight.
Okay, that's what I think we should do, then.
I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, we do.
I think we need to establish a date certain, because this stuff's just dragging too long, and it's taking more staff time, and more staff time, and other things don't get done, so we need to finish it.
I agree with you 100 percent. So, this is my take on it. First of all, we have an existing ordinance, we have existing policies. The only thing that we've added to cultural resources to date is a PAW. And PAWS are, and the only thing that the PAW actually applies to are conditioned permitting. So, I don't know where the confusion lies here, because right now, we have discretionary and non-discretionary permitting, non-discretionary being ministerial, and those are not conditioned right now. So, I don't know if anyone is conditioning those, but if they are, they shouldn't be, period, because that's not in our policy right now. That's not what is existing in our ordinances. So, my suggestion at this point, until we determine that date, and I agree with Betsy, I agree with William, I agree with all of you, we need to get that back ASAP. But until then, there are policies, and there are procedures, there are rules and guidelines that you should be following. And again, I'm just hoping that's what we're doing, so that there isn't confusion.
Right, and it's not case-by-case.
Right, it isn't. It's real simple, it should be real clear.
So, when the tribe comes up and says, would you place a condition on this project for accidental discovery of a cultural resource, what's the direction there?
I would tell you, if it's discretionary, yes, you have the right to condition it. If it's a ministerial project, no, you don't. That's what I would tell you.
Okay.
And that's the policy that staff has been following.
Right, and that's what they've been doing.
Right. Now, let me ask the two members of the ad-hoc committee, when is a reasonable time for this to come back, not knowing that it's probably not going to be completed, but we have to have a date certain to get it back?
Well, we have an item right now that's, we're hoping to put on next council meeting, the discovery of cultural resource. And then, we are working on the flow chart that describes more about the process right now, we're in the midst of that. I think, I personally, as an individual council member, even though the meetings have been pretty contentious, because there's a lot of different interpretations of that conservation element, I think we are getting closer. I would probably say a couple more meetings to really get public input and work with staff to develop that flow chart.
Okay, and how many, how many meetings are there a month?
I would have one more thing to say with that. I'm not necessarily in agreement with bringing piecemeal to the council. We did that with the PAW. We had a real hard time implementing the PAW. Now, we're gonna bring another piecemeal and look for an up or down vote, which, to me, how do you know, how did we know how the PAW would affect our ordinances to date? And then, how do we know what the next thing that we're gonna bring is gonna affect the ordinance to date? And then, how do we know how those two things are gonna interact with the final product? So, my gut says we shouldn't bring anything to council until it's packaged, and it's concise, and it's ready to be looked at.
Okay, then I think what we need to do is say, here's a drop dead date for the ad-hoc committee. Either you have it done by then, or we're gonna disband it. That's what I, that's my opinion. Councilman Clapp, do you have an opinion?
Yes, I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be a finished product, because you can have a report, and another report, and another, which is what we had.
Right, and if they don't finish, then it, then it sunsets.
Yeah, it sunsets. So, what's a good date?
Yeah. What do you think?
I just want to make a comment before we talk about then. I just want to make sure, Mrs. Summers, we're not talking too much about cultural resource, but please, I just want to make sure that we have brought in whole package to the council before, and we've gone a completely different direction of what those recommendations we made as an ad-hoc committee. So, it's been, we've attempted to bring something in a package. It's not that we haven't, so we can't miss, we can't just say we haven't tried. But I do hear your concerns, I agree. We should definitely put a timeline, but at the same time, we have to make our decisions as a council when we bring the recommendation.
But can I, I'm hearing gobble-gobble in my ear, so why don't we have this brought to council before Thanksgiving? That gives us October.
Yeah, that's great.
Which is two meetings. We've got one more meeting this month, and that'll give us a meeting in November.
Sure.
So, I think-
It's good to me.
I think by the second meeting in November, we should have something that we can bring forward.
Where does that second meeting in November, because that's gonna, is that gonna be a meeting that we have, because it's right around Thanksgiving?
So, that's an interesting question. We started to get into that a little bit today on staff, and I'll take a bit too much time, but let me break it down for you real quickly. So, we have one conflict, which is the election day falls on a regular city council meeting date. So, I don't know if there's any desire on the council to hold a regular meeting on November 8th or not.
Why don't we just move it up to November 9th?
We could call a, we could call a special meeting for the, that would be the following date for Wednesday. You could do that. Another option, a couple, just to throw the whole lay of the land out there, so the fourth Tuesday of the month falls on two days before Thanksgiving. So, there's another problematic date for the regular meeting in November. So, perhaps one thought that we were kicking around in staff would be, maybe you call a special meeting for November 15th and split the difference.
Well, normally, we take, we're dark Thanksgiving and Christmas, normally. I mean, people, you know. But before we get into that, one thing, I do want to say one additional thing. I think one of the problems that happened with this cultural resources thing from the beginning was it was never a discussion, a thorough discussion at the council of a first, before the committee went into developing a policy. So, I think a lot of problems were, came from that. I think in the future, when committees are created, they need to be created, have an open session, have a discussion with all the council, get some fundamental direction before it goes into committee, because I think that's a lot of what happened with this. It was a committee that was formed outside of my knowledge, and then came with a report, and it was like, wait, what committee? So, I think it's really important the council be on board with this. That's what happened to me. And so, I think, just in the future, I think we need to be very cautious when we go into subcommittees, that we have clear direction from all of council first before we do that.
All right, well, maybe what we ought to do is say that they either have the report back by the first meeting in December, or it's the committee sunsets.
Yeah, I would support that, first meeting in December, and I would welcome, if there's not unanimity, welcome there be a majority, you know, different, there's different reports from different groups in the committee, so be it. That's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Hold on, I see Dawn wants to, come on up, Dawn. Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, Dawn Teeding, North Signal Street. I'd just like to make some comments about comments that have been made this evening, and provide clarification on the functioning of the ad-hoc committee. First of all, the ad-hoc committee was formed on July 26th by direction of the council. Ms. Clapp did leave that meeting when the vote was taken, so perhaps she doesn't remember the formation. The direction was given as to who is sitting on the, who is sitting on the committee, as well as the functioning of the committee. And that was to recommend ways to implement the general plan. I would ask, Mr. Haney has stated that there are policies, procedures, rules, and guidelines that exist for protection of cultural resources. I would ask those to be provided in writing, because the only one that I know of to date that is in writing that exists to protect cultural resources is Ojai's general plan, as well as now the preliminary archaeological assessment that was passed by council on December 8th. Those are the only two policies that I'm familiar with, and that has been the charter of the ad-hoc committee. We were, had our first meeting on August 14th, and we did come forward with a way to identify potential sites and known sites to replace an outdated map. That was approved by council on December 8th. And then, we went to work on determining how to deal with ministerial activities. And we were ready to move forward with that proposal on March 6th, and the question of interpretation of the general plan came up. And so, that finally went to council on May 24th, with a second meeting on May 31st for discussion. And the proposal that we made, brought forward, which was our best proposal at the time, was to condition ministerial activities, to allow them to be elevated to discretionary. The council felt that that was not the correct direction, and so, we've gone back to the ad-hoc committee to review how we can address review of resources upfront in the permitting process. And that's, so that's where we currently are. We've had an additional direction from the council at that May 31st meeting to include the public in our participation. So, one of our meetings to date has been strictly devoted to updating the public once again on the preliminary archaeological assessment that was passed on December 8th. We did have a public, I've heard multiple times, we have not involved the public. This has come before the public multiple times. We had a workshop on October 26th to review cultural resources. The city attorney gave an excellent presentation on the general plan, in the meeting on the general plan, and we moved forward with that. Ms. Wald made a statement regarding that we've moved away from monitoring, and now are focused more on accidental discovery. And I would like to comment that that is based on location of projects. While it may have, may appear that there's been a change in direction and recommendation, but if you look at the location of projects last year versus the location of projects this year, I think that is the explanation for that difference. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I would like to add just one thing to that. The conversation and our direction was based on AB 52, and how that new law was gonna affect the general plan and the planning department in general. So, I would just like to make sure we add that into the dialogue, Dawn. It wasn't just on the interpretation of our, of our general plan, it was how AB 52 was going to impact the general plan. That's my understanding of it.
My understanding that, that was a separate and distinct. We still have a general plan that we have to follow regardless of secret requirements and AB 52 requirements.
Let me ask you, Dawn, as far as this timeframe, the council is of the opinion, from what I'm hearing, that it's just gone on too long, so we have to put an end date to it. Ad-hoc committees aren't supposed to be permanent committees. If we get to the sunset date, and it sunsets, we can always appoint ad-hoc committee again, if that's what we want to do. But I think we need some sort of an end date to make sure that either something is brought back to us by that date, or we're gonna, the committee is gonna go away. When do you see a realistic date for that?
We have a second version of the flow chart in front of us for the meeting for tomorrow at 6 o'clock. And we've been somewhat limited. In June, we were advised by one of our committee members that he could only devote three hours a month to this discussion, so we have been having one and a half hour meetings twice a month to move forward. We also are trying to involve the public and answer questions that they have, so that has affected the speed at which we can progress, and has made it a bit challenging, just in terms of getting everyone up to speed. So, we would like to bring forward, what we're trying to do right now is figure out how, how to implement the general plan provisions for protecting cultural resources in the context of the existing municipal code, and have been working with staff on that. And we'd like to do the flow chart, we have definitions to address, possible exemptions that council has directed us to move forward, or come forward with recommendations, so we have that to cover also. And we would like to give you a complete package. We have an outline. What I see of presenting is something like a term sheet to move forward, because we would like council input before we spend a whole lot of time on all the details, or the wording, or whatnot. I don't have, I wish I had a firm date, but there are so many, again, taking questions from the public during these meetings, limited time, limited frequency. It's difficult for me to anticipate, to be honest.
All right, any other thoughts on, from the council on this? Do you think maybe we ought to extend it to the first meeting in January, so at that point, all the new council will have been seated, and we start the year off? Or do you think December, the first meeting in December would be the right one?
Well, I would personally prefer to do it in December, and let's, let's bring the best that we have forward at that point in time.
Okay, all right.
I'm partial to that approach.
Would somebody make a motion to that effect, then?
And what I heard also, Ms. Teeding's comments, term sheet, we would like to bring a term sheet forward. Maybe we could discuss at that time what we want to do with it.
Well, let me say, if there's anything that has to come before the council before then.
Yeah.
We'll get it on an agenda before then.
So, we already have one item?
Even if you bring it in as a term sheet.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll move to have a sunset date to the ad-hoc committee, the first meeting of December.
Okay, great, now I'll second it. Or do we want to, does it have to be linked to a committee? Is that, would we be, Mr. Summers, if at that point where we now say there's gonna be a sunset, could we then turn around and reinstate it at that time, or should there be a definite sunset?
That would be a choice up to the council.
Okay.
You could either, just evaluate the policy and the term sheet yourself, and debate it in one or two meetings and adopt it. Alternatively, you could decide to kick the term sheet back to the committee, I would suggest. If you do so, two points that we've learned from, as Councilmember Clapp noted, give a hard date on that return.
Okay.
And clearly state the composition of the committee to consider it again.
Okay.
Yeah, I would suggest a friendly amendment to the motion, be a hard date for the report.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
Okay.
Term sheet, for the first week of December, by the first week of-
I might suggest the first meeting in December, because I believe it's actually the second week.
First meeting in-
First meeting in December.
First meeting in December. All right, so that is the date when the, when the term sheet is due back, or report, or the ad-hoc committee sunsets.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
And whose motion is that? Yours?
Yes.
Councilman Laura? Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, then I'd like to have a roll call of the city council.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Clapp?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Blatts?
Yes. All right, so I think that answers some of your questions as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes.
One point of clarification, I heard two different things, want to make sure I heard it correctly. I heard at one point that council was saying that they wanted all the items to come back at one time, but then I'm hearing that there was some recommendation to bring some items forward separately?
If the, if the committee believes that it's advantageous to bring something to us before the first week in December.
Okay.
I am amenable to having that on the agenda.
Okay, so it doesn't all need to come as one piece, then?
Right.
Okay.
All we're saying is we want everything to be in by the first week in December, and if it's not, then it sunsets.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the primate circles rezone. This has not been before us. My understanding is there are issues with the zone, some conflicting elements of the zone itself, as well- zone itself, as well as the desire for the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhoods to have some input. So my understanding was that we were going to have, and Director Wald, maybe you can help me with this, we were going to have sort of a workshop sort of situation with the neighborhood and what was, what were we thinking in that regard?
Yeah, we were wanting, so in zoning to make, and rezoning to make the zoning consistent with the general plan, there will be a new zoning for some of those properties out in the circle area, which will make some of the uses that were permitted under the M-1 not allowed under the MPD. And so we wanted to have a neighborhood meeting or a business meeting and kind of go flush out all those issues with the people that, the stakeholders, so that they didn't come to council and just kind of hit you with a lot of concerns. So we were able to explain that to them. And so then from that meeting, we would be able to come to you with a term sheet or some kind of proposal that will say, listen, there's a couple of different ways you can do this. You can rezone the whole thing, and these are the properties you're probably going to make legal nonconforming. You can rezone and then do a general plan amendment, or maybe a text amendment, add some new uses in, those kind of things. We just give you options then, and then, right, and then complete the project. So right now, we're just waiting for staff to have like a neighborhood meeting on, on this issue. That's where we're going with it, if that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
I think that just from the neighborhood is, I know one thing that we've heard at planning in the past is they want to do what they can to make sure that the light industrial doesn't become more industrial, that they want to, there, there's some concerns about, that's probably what they're going to say, that they are concerned about what, what actually could start to occur in their backyards.
I think the residents, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The residents behind, the ones we've heard before, when Wild Academy was going through, they're, they're the ones that are mostly concerned about, you know, having a even more industrial use in close proximity to residences. That's what I've heard so far.
But isn't the use that we're concerned about is totally non-industrial?
Right. There would be existing uses out there and right around that area is pretty, I would say, business park-like, to use kind of a descriptor.
Right. Well, though, what I'm talking about is in that one little section of office buildings that technically you can't have like a law office.
We fixed that.
Oh, you did? You fixed that?
We fixed that, and then we will make sure when, we fixed that in the M-1, but now this is going to be MPD, and we'll make sure that that's all, I don't think it's an issue in the MPD because the manufacturing plan development was more, was intended to be more business park-like and not, quote, heavy commercial, light industrial type. So we're just, we're just, that's how we're going with that project. We just want to have a neighborhood meeting so people kind of know where the issues are and the recommendations they can make to council instead of you flushing that out council, and then we bring it forward, if that's how you'd like to see it.
Any questions on staff?
I would urge as many members of planning commission that could fit it in their schedule to attend that neighborhood meeting.
Well, yes, we want to have it, yeah, we want to have it where they would come and participate.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Landscape ordinance, my understanding is that's ready to go. I think it's just, I think Commissioner Nolan did some work on it. She submitted some input in that regard, and I think it's basically ready to go, is it not?
So, no, Commissioner Nolan did it the last round, when it was less restrictive. So I think all I need is a point of clarification, last joint meeting, there was some indication that you wanted some additional water-wise savings things implemented into the zoning ordinance. The issue, we've done some preliminary research, it looks like most of the communities have adopted the state water, the modified water efficient landscaping ordinance as is because, as we all know, it's pretty strict. And so I, I, we couldn't really find any local community, and it's not like, you know, it's new, and so maybe the information isn't up on the state's website yet, but we did do a list serve to kind of get some ideas, but I was just hoping I could get direction to bring the landscaping forward as is, codify it. We did it last year by order of law, correct, Matthew? And then we want to codify it, and the reason for codifying it is to make sure that it's in the city's municipal code, so there's not a conflict with pulling, pulling up the old section and getting confusion for developers or contractors.
Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, as part of the governor's grand response to the drought and trying to resolve domestic water use, which is largely landscaping at the residential level, the state adopted a new model water efficient landscape ordinance known commonly as the Muelo, and that took effect by operation of law December 1st, 2015, in all places in the state, including Ojai. There was an option for, and remains to, to the state, cities are allowed to adopt something that is stricter than the state model, but certainly not less strict than the state model. The previous city manager decided to, and I believe in consultation with the council, have that be adopted by state law here and not rewrite the city's ordinance at the time, which means that the Muelo on the city's books in the municipal code is preempted by state law and is not enforceable. As I understand it, as stated by Director Wald, the idea with the current proposal is to delete what's in this current city code, which is preempted, and replace it with the preemptive state ordinance so that an individual or resident need only look at the city's code to understand what the rules are. Put into that process could also be strengthening the Muelo ordinance beyond the state minimum, but at a minimum, the goal, as I understand it, is to replace what's in the code, the preempted language in the current code with the current effective language from the state code, ensuring an easier read for residents.
Mr. Mayor?
I think this is another example of something stuck in committee because the landscape ordinance has been stuck and stuck and stuck. It didn't, it didn't find, I guess I'm, has it been brought to us?
No, as far as from the planning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, yeah. So we haven't seen it yet. So let's go ahead and adopt, I would suggest we go ahead and adopt the state and then get that to us as soon as possible.
Well, I think it's already in effect by the, the state by operation of law.
Yes, but what the ordinance, it has gone to the planning commission to be reviewed. We need to move that through more quickly then, so we can get that out and done.
What we need to do is, is look in it and see if there's any contradictions between the state and what the planning commission's done, and make sure none of the regulations are less restrictive than the state's.
Well, if I can clarify what I was asking for, excuse me, is that in the last joint meeting, I think that maybe Commissioner Jagallo would speak to this, that I think there was, you gave some direction that they could do with the sustainable committee, do some modifications to it, but my fear is that then it will get stuck in committee and we still have this kind of bust in our municipal code. We want, as you know, we like to be consumer-friendly and we like to have complete transparency, and so while it is adopted by order of law, if you do look up the code and the municipal code, it is somewhat misleading, so we wanted to get that cleared, cleared up. But if you want it to go to committee and, and to have more stringent things put in it, that's what I need to know and how long you want me to have, what deadline to get that done. So I don't want it to languish.
You might want that to go through planning commission first.
Mike?
Yeah.
You might, you might want that to go through planning commission first, so we can look at that ordinance, compare it with the new state laws, and we can do some of the work for the council.
Yeah, I'm still not making myself clear. I apologize. I don't know what the, why I'm not, okay, it is exactly like the state ordinance. It is exactly, all we're trying to do is get it codified into the, into the city of Ojai's municipal code. However, if you send it over to committee, then I just need some direction when it goes to committee, what the goals are and how long you're going to let it be there. But I will say that in staff's practice of using this modified Muelo, it is very stringent and very difficult for people to comply with.
Okay. Well, why does it have to go to a committee?
It, I don't, that, it, it does not, that's what I'm asking. That's the point.
Yeah, it seems, let me just try to make sure I understand. Basically, we're trying to say, this is a force of law already, but people can't look it up in the code.
Right, correct.
So let's get it in the code so they can look it up.
Thank you. That's what I'm trying to do.
And then if we want to change it from there, fine.
Okay, that's all I need.
But let's get it in the code so it's user-friendly, and we don't need to go to commission for that, it should just do it.
Thank you. That's all I needed. No, no committee.
By the way, bringing it into the code will not make it user-friendly. It is a very, very difficult.
I didn't mean the code user-friendly, I meant user-friendly being able to look it up.
Correct, and that's all I, I just want to keep it from getting in committee and not getting out.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
One comment on this one, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Because it's part of the zoning ordinance, it, government code does require that it go to the planning commission for recommendation to the council.
Right.
But it certainly need to go to committee of the planning commission.
All right. So let's do that as quickly as we can.
Yes, sir, I've got my direction. I'm, I'm good with that now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We'll get it scheduled.
Yeah, the cleanup, the code revisions. Before we move on to that, I would like to interject something around the committee issue. Is that okay?
No.
It's the complete streets committee. That's been in existence for six or seven years. I think we have a same, similar situation with that. And we had community workshops with that, and they've been, the time's passing, and people are going to have forgotten what was said. That's another thing I think we've got to finish. We need a date certain for that as well, and I would encourage council to come up with a date certain to get that resolved as well.
I, I was thinking the same thing, except Commissioner Nolan's not here tonight, and I really would like input from her before we, we make that decision. Unless we arbitrarily just want to pick a date, and if it doesn't work, she can always come before us and ask it to be modified.
This is our time to meet together as a unit somehow, would we?
I'd like to raise one issue with respect to that, what you just said. A little different. One is that there is a complete streets program in our municipal code. It's in our code, where there's a reference to municipal, to complete streets and that it's supposed, they're supposed to be part of public works projects and, and it's supposed to be included in large discretionary projects. So it's in the code already that a complete streets activity is, or considerations are supposed to be going on. Number one. Number two, my understanding is that this is a subcommittee of the planning commission, not of the council.
Right, so it's the same thing. We'd have to go to the planning commission for review by the planning commission, which it hasn't done.
And so the only thing I, and it should.
Exactly.
Okay? And the only thing is, I would like just to interject is the, is that other wrinkle, that there is a reference to a complete streets program and doing things per complete streets review in the municipal code. And, and we won't want to do, do away with a group that might be in place to do, to discharge that responsibility in terms of recommendation to the full committee. I see our community development director nodding her head.
I think it's, it's very clear that the committee serves two functions. One, to do a subcommittee of the planning commission that looks at long-term planning as it relates to complete streets. And the other half of it, which is what you were just speaking of, which is kind of an advisory group to public works projects. And so I think we, we would just like some, or I, or the planning commission would like some direction on how to get the part that is directly responsible, the planning commission is directly responsible, which is the long-range planning, for them to get feedback and them take action on that, direction back. I started off by saying feedback. We get feedback, but what we don't get is it brought up to planning commission and then blessing it and giving direction.
I totally agree.
Okay.
I have no dis-
It's the same situation as the-
I totally agree.
Thank you.
My understanding is there's a master plan floating around, but, you know, we haven't seen it. We have no idea really what's in it, and it's very-
Well, it may be that the planning commission wants to dictate a date certain to get it back, or else it sunsets with regard to that master plan. Okay?
Sounds good.
And you can take that up at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
One point to, oh, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, councilwoman.
No, I was just, thank you for letting me interject that because I think those are three committees that have been-
Yeah, I agree.
If the council and the commission would wish, I can provide some brief background on the code section that Mayor Protim Wirick cited, which is section 10-2, 2006, Public Structures and Complete Streets, it requires, paraphrasing, subsection A requires that all public structures, so large public works projects ground up, be reviewed by the planning commission. And subsection B, complete streets, requires that all projects subject to design review, quote, affirmatively further the principles and practices of complete streets where feasible, as used herein, complete streets means the accommodation of all travelers, particularly public transit users, bicycles, pedestrians, individuals with disabilities, and motorists, to enable all travelers to use this roadway safely and efficiently. And refers to design guidelines, see regularly to be adopted by the planning commission, and in the absence of adopted guidelines by the planning commission, it refers to two resources from the Walkable and Livable Communities Institute and the American Planning Association. There's no direct reference in the code to a complete street subcommittee. That's been a creation of the planning commission and the council, so you needn't-
At the pleasure of the planning commission.
Exactly.
Okay.
And again, for reference, that's subsection, code section 10-2, 2006, part of the designer review section. Thank you.
Got it?
Got it.
All right, great. All right. Cleanup code revisions.
Uh, one, one quick question. Mr. Summers, am I out of bounds just to make a quick comment about the status of the well moratorium as a, as a component of landscaping ordinance? Not that it's part of the ordinance, but is it too tangential?
That's sufficiently within the scope of the ordinance, of the discussion on the planning commission and city council joint meeting.
Okay, I just want to-
And I'll note that that'll also probably come up in the main council agenda. It's a bit of a stretch.
It's a big stretch.
I'm just, I'm going to say one quick thing.
And it will come up, I expect, in the council's item number four, which is the water-wise development standards item, or three.
Right, so it will come, good point, and thank you for the latitude. I just want to make the point that the, that our moratorium in the city on, on well drilling is, is sunsetting at the end of October, and given our critical water issues right now, I know councils will have the matter well in hand and see whatever we can do to, in my opinion, extend that moratorium on well drilling in the city. Cleanup code revisions. I'm going to kick this to Director Wald.
So we would just like to know, or get some input and direction from council on that. Occasionally, we're working on items, and we come across code sections that don't really work or very archaic, and we'd like to possibly keep a list of those and bring them back and have the planning commission work on those. One that came up just recently is we have a 10-foot separation between buildings, one, you know, detached garage and building, and it's 15, it's an additional five feet for each structure that has windows in it, so you can end up as far as 20 feet apart trying to do a detached garage, which is generally preferred, you know, if your garage is in the rear than up in the snub nose. So it seems like some code sections kind of need to make way for it just being more a building code separation and fire separation issue, and maybe that's a good example, maybe it's not a good example, but we'd like, you know, some direction or maybe some, yes, some head nodding that, yes, we can keep track of those and then bring them up with a turn sheet to council and, and try to get the code a little bit more user-friendly for folks.
Okay, it seems to me, just keep a rolling list.
That's what I said, a rolling list.
I mean, I mean, sometimes I've been reading the code and I'll reference a part of the code that no longer exists, it's been repealed. I mean, those are easy.
Right.
But I mean, I would just think that, that just a rolling list in anything that's associated with Title 10, just bring it, I think the planning commission would welcome, and it doesn't have to be exhaustive or say we've done everything, just-
No.
Here's what we got so far.
I was thinking like every six-
You can digest these tonight.
Right, every six months or as time allows. I'm, I really appreciate that, because it's-
That's my opinion, you know?
If councils, if I get head shakes with the rest of them, because we'd rather do that than entertain a huge wholesale, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
No, we don't want a committee, but we, you know, we see them, we see them, we know they don't work, and we try to go around them, and I'd just rather fix them.
Okay.
The failings in the code, yes.
All right. Anything else?
No, I just want to, I don't know if one of my fellow commissioners want to say anything, but I do want to thank you, Mayor Blatts, and council for making time in your schedules to meet us again to really get through the rest of these items. It's been very helpful, very helpful for us to have this direction and, and move forward in a, you know, clear line, clear straight line. So I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? And I just want to thank the planning commission, having been on it for 10 years, twice, two meetings a month, totally volunteer, it's a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. You are so important to the city and so important to the council, you have no idea. So, thank you very much, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.